Thank you. Right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of Planning Applications Committee. I have a couple of announcements before we start the agenda and then I've also got an officer announcement after that. So I'd like to inform everyone present that this meeting will be recorded and broadcast live on the internet and will be available for repeat viewing on the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during a webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. The seating in the public gallery will not be filmed. Members of the public are only able to speak if they have registered their intention in accordance with council procedure rules. As Chair, I have the discretion to adjourn the meeting in the event there is disorderly conduct from councillors or members of the public in accordance with standing orders 34 and 35. I can also terminate or suspend webcasting of the meeting in accordance with the webcasting protocol, as sincerely hope none of that is necessary. Can I ask Steve Weiger to just do us an update on an item on the agenda? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This is to do with item 10, 109B Oxford Road. Very recently and since the publication of the Main Agenda Report, the applicant has submitted an additional noise report which seeks to demonstrate that with additional noise mitigation in place, the noise levels meet the council's noise criteria. Given the submission of this additional information, officers' advice is to defer determination of the application to allow for this information to be fully assessed and to be reported to a future committee. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Happy with that. Yes, so we won't discuss that item when we get to it. To take us on to the agenda, are we happy to approve the minutes of both the meeting on the 1st of June and the 22nd of June? Recall the minutes were deferred last time. I believe they're now correct record. Is everybody happy to agree that? Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest? No, thank you. We do have questions tonight, item 3, from councillor Williams. Councillor Williams.
Thank you very much, Chair. Will the Chair please tell us what heritage buildings owned by the council fall into the following categories: locally listed, grade 2, grade 2* and grade 1? Thank you.
In response to that question, heritage buildings owned by the council, a list of heritage buildings owned by the council is in Appendix 1 with the locally listed LL reference, i.e. those that are not statutorily listed or otherwise listed grade 2, grade 2* or grade 1. There are five locally listed buildings, 47 grade 2 listed buildings, three grade 2* listed buildings and one grade 1 listed building. Do you have a supplementary to that one?
No, I apologise. Yeah, I should have just carried on and read the second question. But I'm very grateful to the answer, that's a fascinating heritage portfolio. Thank you. Shall I carry on?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I apologise, I should have. Will the Chair please tell us what statutory duties, if any, the council has to maintain, care, preserve and conserve the heritage buildings that it owns? And if those duties differ, could we please have those statutory duties listed separately for each different grade? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. There are, sorry, it's run into one here. The duties of the council as landowner are the same as any other landowner. While listed buildings are recognised as being national importance, there is no statutory duty to proactively maintain them and keep them in good order. However, there are measures or powers that allow the local planning authority to intervene when a property is at risk of redevelopment or is being harmed through unacceptable alterations. Below is an overview and is divided into and under the headings of locally listed buildings and statutory listed buildings. So firstly, locally listed buildings, of the 22 locally listed buildings and structures currently on the council's local list, five are council-owned. Locally listed buildings are not statutorily protected from demolition or alteration and their legal heritage status is described in policy as non-designated heritage assets. However, the special local importance of an asset will be material consideration to any relevant planning proposal, planning applications seeking prior approval to demolish etc. and would principally be considered under the Local Plan Policy EN4, locally important heritage assets. In terms of statutory listed buildings, the majority of controls which local planning authorities have for preserving listed buildings are from the primary legislation contained within the Town and Country Planning Listed Buildings and Conservation Area Act of 1990. Under the LBCA, that's the act, the LPA can serve the following notices. Firstly, a listed building enforcement notice under section 38 (1) to put right any damaging works. Secondly, a notice of compulsory purchase of listed buildings in need of repair under section 47. Thirdly, a repairs notice under section 48 or finally, an urgent works notice under sections 54 and 55 specifying those works it considers reasonably necessary for the proper preservation of the building. Other controls available are firstly, a section 215 (1) untidy site notice under the Town and Country Planning Act 1990, to be used when the condition of a building or land is adversely affecting the amenity of an area, including listing building or locally listed buildings where powers under sections 77 and 78 of the Building Act 1984 are relevant in relation. Sorry, I've read that wrong. Sorry, basically we're saying on the first one, that cannot relate to structural or substantial restoration. However, powers under 77 and 78 of Building Act 1984 are relevant in relation to dangerous building structures. A magistrate's court order can be obtained by the local authority to take such steps as necessary for making the building safe. However, the local authority must first consider taking action under sections 47 and 48 or sections 54 of the act above. Appendix 1 is the list of heritage buildings, but I'm not going to read all those out. Apparently they are also available on the website. So have you any supplementary?
Yes, please. First, thank you very much for that detailed answer. As I understand it, if there's a privately owned listed building, the council, which is either being damaged, in need of repair or is in a poor state of preservation, the council has the powers you've listed. What happens if it's the council that owns a building which is being damaged, in need of repair or isn't being properly preserved?
Well, I would very much hope that officers from various parts of the council would get together and look at ways in which that situation did not arise, or if it was in danger of arising, then they would take action to secure the protection of the building. And unfortunately, quite often it would be nice to go in there and spend a lot of money on such buildings, but sometimes it is just about keeping them from deteriorating further because we simply don't have enough funds available to deal with all those buildings currently. And you will know as well as I do, councillor Williams, about the choices we have to make with regard to expenditure, particularly as we've suffered in the recent years, so much in the way of removal of funding from government in particular. So we do our best and to keep things safe, but we do not necessarily have the funds to do all the works that we would like to at one time. Which takes us on to potential site visits on page 23. And can I say thank you for adding in the list of ones we've agreed at previous committees that are still to be carried out, but also we would like to request that the ones that are unaccompanied visits also be listed so that we can keep track of those as well. Officers to introduce?
Thank you, Chair. Nothing to add to this, but would you like some commentary on the ones that are shown on page 25?
Briefly, please.
We are hoping to get Henley Road to a future committee, September or October. Once we find out that, we will be doing an accompanied site visit. Caversham Park is in a very similar situation. I don't have officer updates on the other two at the moment, I'm afraid, but we will seek information and come back to you.
Thank you. Can we add the application down in Whitley on the traveller's site to that list as well?
Yes, Chair.
Please, thank you. Anybody else got anything they want to add? No? In which case can we note that, and it looks likely there will be some planning site visits at the end of August, ahead of the 7th of September meeting, so people keep an eye open for that. Thank you. Takes us on to applications that are subject to planning appeals.
Thank you, Chair. You've got a list of appeals lodged and decisions reached on pages 29 and 30 of your agenda. No reports for the committee this time.
Any comments on any of that? Councillor Carnell.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'm very pleased particularly to see the application in Caversham Heights, the appeal was dismissed. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else? No? In which case can we note that and move on to applications for prior approval on page 31?
Yes, I don't think officers have anything to add to this one. Thank you, Chair.
Any members got comments or questions? No? In which case can we note that report as well? Thank you. And then we go on to item 7, which is the works to protected trees at St Mary's Churchyard on page 37. Sarah Hansen to introduce this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. As explained in the report, the Town and Country Planning Act 1990 requires applications for works to council-owned or maintained TPO trees to be decided by a committee of the council, which is not responsible for managing the land to which the application relates. The law also requires a public notice to be displayed for at least 21 days, giving details of the proposed works. Two notices were put up in the churchyard on the 6th of July and will be left for the required period, i.e. until the 27th of July. Thus far, no comments have been received. 4.1 and 4.2 of the report detail the proposed tree works in the churchyard, which are in line with good arboricultural management. The works proposed are not considered to be harmful to the tree's appearance or future health and are reasonable works in order to appropriately manage the trees. It is therefore recommended that works be approved, subject to no substantive objections being received. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Councillor Rowland.
Thank you, Chair. As a ward councillor and also the town's heritage champion, the final, the lead councillor also for environmental services, I'm really pleased with this plan to take care of these trees for far into the future because I think we will all recognise that the churchyard is really lovely and it's greatly enhanced by the trees. Further into the future, we will be looking to obviously publicise these as much as we can, probably with some kind of media announcement, just to let people know about the works because initially it may be, you know, it will have a different appearance or something, you know, along that kind of method. And we will just want to reassure people that this is proper arboricultural techniques that are being taken to improve these for the future and we'll make sure that that's properly publicised. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? No? In which case can I see all those in favour of this report, please? Thank you. And then we go on to the review of delegations as we come out of the COVID restrictions. I think Julie Williams is going to beam in from somewhere.
Yes, good evening, committee. So the purpose of this report is to seek your agreement to extend the, well, we had an interim arrangement with delegated powers during, introduced to deal with the online committees. The interim arrangements should have come to an end last May when the online committees ceased, but we've sort of carried on, but we now need to sort of get this resolved. So as I say, the purpose of the report is to seek your agreement for retaining most of those extended delegations and they are set out on appendix 3 of your report. Appendix 1 provides you with the delegation pre-April 2020 and appendix 2 provides you with the delegations as put forward to policy committee in April 2020, which confirmed the interim arrangements. Also, I provided in an update report for you a table of the major applications that have been determined with the benefit of the extended delegation. So those are major applications refused by officers and it also shows where in some cases the majors were referred to committee and we've got four instances where we had decisions made by committee on those determinations. So with that, I've got nothing really more to add to my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but I'm hoping that you all agree to the list of delegations in appendix 3. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'll throw it over to other people in a minute, but can I first of all propose that we have a slight variation on page 51 to the first item on that list, which is applications called in by councillors. It could be, it sounded a little bit bureaucratic and putting people off, so I would prefer to see the wording, councillors need to explain why a decision by Planning Applications Committee is required in consultation with the Chair of Planning Applications Committee and the planning manager. Just as simple as that, really. And that's, I don't think will materially alter things, but it may also, given we have a number of new councillors this year, the biggest we've had for a long time, it may be worth putting a note round to everybody else as well to explain what calling is and how that system would work. So I'd like to propose that as a change to the list.
Do you mean the first column or the second column?
It's appendix 3 on page 51.
Yep.
Well, it's got applications called in etc. etc. in the left-hand column and then there's a whole section on the right-hand side and I'm suggesting we make that much more simple.
So the right-hand column, you're suggesting just says councillors need to explain why a decision is required?
Do you want me to read it again?
So we're taking off the planning manager, will then notify the case officer or leaving that on?
Councillors need to explain why a decision by PAC is required in consultation with the Chair of PAC and the planning manager. Just one simple sentence.
Yep.
And delete the second section. Yeah, is that okay? Right, I'll throw that open and I will ask obviously people if they agree with that change of wording when we come to make a decision. Anybody else want to comment? I'm not seeing anybody. So can I see all those in favour of the recommendation, including the alteration of the first delegation on page 51, as we've just discussed? Thank you. That's unanimous, thank you. Takes us on to the Bugle in Friar Street, the application for the, or the proposal that the, it should be listed on the locally important buildings list. And we've got Bruce here to introduce that, Bruce Edgar. But I also need to say that there was a request from the owner slash developer of this site to come and speak, so I have agreed to that for five minutes. It won't be like a planning application though, we're not going to be questioning the person who speaks for it, we just listen to what they've got to say. And then we've also got Evelyn Williams from the Conservation Area Committee to come and speak to us in favour of it. So if Mr Owens speaks first and then Evelyn after that, but first of all, can I get Bruce to introduce the item? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This is probably one of our first locally listed building nominations, which has stirred passions around. Most of the items and details are in the report. There was one minor spilling mistake, which is in the update report, which is correcting the name of the property. And the other was the clarifications of the census and the occupation of the building and the history of the people who occupied it. The members have that. It's a very significant and one of the last few traditional pubs in Friar Street. I think it is the last traditional pub and it dates from the 1840s and it's been part of Reading's historic planning and community use. So what we did was, in this report, we looked at the criteria for listing in Agenda 2 of the, I think it's appendix 2 of the local plan, and that's what we weighed up our decision to recommend the listing for the building.
Thank you very much. So if Mr Owens would like to come and speak to us now, you have up to five minutes and Nikki will keep time and if you'd like to introduce yourself first and then we'll start timing.
Thank you, Chair. I'm David Owens and in charge of development at Factory Estates, who are the owners of the Bugle and that forms part of our wider landholding in Reading Town Centre. And thank you for this opportunity to speak to this committee. In terms of backgrounds, we acquired the Bugle over five years ago in a very poor state of condition. In terms of its viability and its commercial position, we took it on with issues in terms of rent arrears and a tenant that was struggling to pay even a below market price, below market rent, sorry, due to a lack of trade. We worked with the current tenant, that's not my role in the company, but this is the kind of asset management role and despite rent-free periods and writing off rent arrears, obviously COVID, which obviously came into the arena, the tenants surrendered the premises in October 2021 due to a continued lack of trade. In terms of, we first met with Reading Senior Planning Team in November 2019 with a vision to redevelop our sites in Queen Victoria Street and Friar Street with a comprehensive mixed-use redevelopment, including hotel, market square, retail and apart hotel. Phase 1 of that scheme was approved by this committee in June 2021, which was for a market square and apart hotel. Phase 2, that includes the Bugle, we're planning, well, on course to submit a planning application by the end of July, early August. On this application, we've been in pre-application discussions since October 2021 about phase 2, which is for a hotel. The scheme originally proposed the comprehensive redevelopment of the site, so the removal of all buildings on the site, including the Bugle. But as a result of the detailed negotiations with CAC, Reading Civic Society, planning officers and Bruce Edgar, the council conservation lead, the scheme now has been evolved to retain the main body, by the front part of the Bugle, as part of our hotel development. And that, and thanks to this consultation and work and the insistence of Bruce and Civic Society and CAC, that kind of, we feel it makes the scheme special. Officers have already identified the Bugle as a non-designated heritage asset and as such, retaining the front part adheres to our thinking on the role it pays. Based upon the detailed consultations with the previously mentioned people and the agreeing the townscape and design solution for our forthcoming planning application, we question the need to locally list at this stage. Notwithstanding this, we propose to keep the front of the Bugle, which has been heavily altered both internally externally, and revitalise it as a food and beverage offering in Friar Street. Further, Fife Court will be protected and important access to the rear and the importance it plays in the street scheme. The current scheme has the full support of the planning officers, a Reading Design Review Panel and feedback in the main from the public consultation, which obviously includes the retention of the Bugle and the demolition of the rear former cottages. What we would like to point out is a site proposed for local listing could be split into two elements, the front part and the rear, and the rear which was not part of the public house. As such, if members are minded to locally list, we would suggest that an amendment could be made, that the important parts and the part that has any real significance, i.e. the front and that which we want to retain, could be locally listed and the designation could be modified to just cover this part and the rear, that did not form part of the original pub, could be omitted. This would then accord with the proposed planning scheme that will be smitting very shortly. The rear buildings have been assessed by our historical building advisor, who concluded that the rear remains a series of ad hoc brick structures that were clearly built as an auxiliary purposes and have been heavily altered both internally externally and have little architectural value or interest. As an alternative, I would request that as we have worked with, as we have worked the conservation team extensively, that we review this further and whether we should defer a decision on the local listing to allow us to explore this partial local listing. To conclude, I want to stress as a company, we have a diverse landhold across the country, which includes many listed buildings and major town centre schemes. We are respectful of past and will always seek to work with officers to achieve heritage benefits and secure the building's future and hence why we've included the Bugle into our scheme. We have a significant ongoing and planned investment into Reading Town Centre across multiple properties and for the first time, we now have a viable, deliverable scheme to our sites in Friar Street QVS. The local listing as currently proposed will create a high level of uncertainty for us.
That's your five minutes, David, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to introduce yourself and then we'll start your five minutes?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Evelyn Williams. I'm Chair of Reading Conservation Area Advisory Committee and I'm very pleased to be able to speak to you tonight about the Bugle Public House on Friar Street. Reading CAC have submitted several applications for local listing that have been considered by this committee, but this is the first on which public speaking has taken place. We submitted a local listing application for the Bugle and the cottages on Fife Court and demonstrated how they met the criteria for local listing as set out in the new local plan, policy EN4 and appendix 2. Although it is the Bugle that receives most attention as the public house that fronts Friar Street, we included the whole of Fife Court too, as the tenements behind are also an important part of Reading's heritage. Over the years, the Bugle has absorbed some of these dwellings. In the time before Queen Victoria Street was laid out, there were three through routes from Friar Street to Broad Street, Cross Street, Union Street and the Pig Market. There were also courts leading off this side of Friar Street and in 1842, there were eight. Fife Court is the last of these that remains. We felt that Reading should recognise the importance of this survivor, of the simple housing that existed in the centre of Reading, as well as the public house on Friar Street. We've participated in consultations with the developer about their plans for this area of Friar Street, including the site of the proposed, the site proposed for local listing. We have consistently fought for the retention of the Bugle into the development, so we were very pleased that the Bugle, albeit with a reduced footprint, has been incorporated into their proposals. However, we note that in paragraph 19 of the Landowners' Representation on our local listing nomination, shown in appendix 5 of the officer's report, it is stated that the Bugle is an anomaly in the street scene with limited architectural value. We argue that the Bugle contributes significantly to the street scene on Friar Street. Alterations were made to the facade in the early 20th century, which have arts and crafts influences. However, as is shown in the comparison in the officer's report, which is actually the one on screen now, it's still possible to read the original building and its underlying structure at the front and also at the rear. By 1833, H&amp;G Simmons were Reading's major brewer. They purchased the freehold of the Bugle and dwellings behind in the early 1880s, having previously been leaseholders. They carried out improvements in the early 20th century, as documented in the listing application, and by managing the quantity and quality of their pub estate, Simmons secured a full publican's licence in 1855. secured a full publican's licence in 1855. The Bugle is a lucky survival. Other pub buildings on Friar Street, such as the Boar's Head, have not been as fortunate. It is as a pub that Bugle meets the local listing criteria for social importance. We disagree with other comments in the Consultants' Heritage Report. In particular, it is not correct to say, as paragraph 17 states, that the premises received a licence in the early 1900s. We have evidence of its existence from directorism from licensing records held in the Berkshire Record Office, that it was a beer house known by the sign of the Bugle from before 1869. The 1830 Beerhouse Act allowed the opening of a beer house on payment of a fee without the involvement of the licensing magistrates. This led to a proliferation of drinking establishments, not all of which had a sign or name. In 1869, this changed, and many of the more disreputable beer houses were closed. We know that the Bugle survived from licensing records. Please approve this nomination so that the heritage value of the site can be properly understood and considered when a decision is made on any future planning applications that incorporate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's throw it open to the committee now to ask questions of either the officer or make comments. councillor Rowland, you were first, I think.
Thank you, Chair. And again, I'm pleased to hear that we actually allowed discussion on this this evening, or at least for the developer to come forward and then for Evelyn Williams of the CAC to come forward too, about this very interesting local listing proposal. The, it was rather unfortunate that the developer, the very last thing he said before he got cut off was something about his, quote, "high level of uncertainty", which I suppose, because we can't ask, will remain forever a conundrum. But I could actually spring off of that. I think that the developer is well aware that a local listing forms it beneficially as a non-designated heritage asset, but it is not a listed building and it only carries material weight in any planning consideration. I do, I do understand and take on board the work that his organisation has done in the phase one approval and also the phase two that they are now trying to develop, and their expressed interest in the retention of the facade of the, of the, of the Bugle. However, they put forward comments in regards to the fact that they did not feel that, on this occasion, this rose to the, to the level of, of our local listing criteria. And I would, I would beg to defer because I think, as has been set out in the documentation and further expressed by Evelyn Williams, that we do meet on a number of different levels. And just to clarify, in our local listing, we are required, the building is required to meet with at least one of the significant criteria detailed below either historic interest, and that breaks down into historic association, social importance, both of which were substantiated, I believe, and certainly in the social importance category, which I think was well proven and also with the association with Simmons, who I think is a name that we all know in this town. Its, its social importance really, really trumped something and really, really gives a sense of, of importantness to this, to this building, if I could. Finally, the architectural interest wherein many of the, many of its descriptors can be considered to be, quote, "fairly typical" and the architecture developed over the years. I do still think that that is, that is typical and that makes, as I often say, "keep Reading, Reading". It does keep Reading, Reading. But finally, the most important thing, which I heard the developer allude to, is about the group value and which, which Evelyn Williams has, has also countered, is the importance of this as part of our, I guess one might want to delicately say, and forgive me because I'm not a native to this country, our working class heritage, which is very, very important and told beautifully in this building and also the connected Fife Court. That is one of eight courts that is left along Friar Street. And that really talks to our, our working class heritage and the whole history of courts as we know them in this country. As a matter of fact, very, very prominently, historic England now has offered grants on, on the hidden histories of, of our working class history because they are not so well-known and perhaps they kind of live in lore and all of that. Although, again, I think the CAC has done a really good job of detailing for us, that was very easy to see in our supplemental pack, the history of the building and, and the court over the years. So I, I think without a doubt, this does meet our criteria. I do know that the developer is aware that this simply is a material consideration. We have seen their forthcoming, forthcomingness in, in the dealing with the local heritage that we already have there. And I do not think that this is an unreasonable counsel, unreasonable in, in any way, in working and having that cooperation about protecting our heritage in the future. And I have no doubt about the fact that we will be able to likely find a way forward for continued work on that site. But Chair, I would like to propose that, that in the spirit of keeping Reading, Reading, this is something that makes, makes Reading, Reading, and I would propose that this should definitely be locally listed as it is detailed in the description, which we have got set out in our paperwork to detail the site. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Moore, I think you were indicating next.
Thank you very much, Chair. As a former Chair of the Reading Mid Berkshire branch of Campaign for Real Help, this is a, pubs are very strong things to my heart. The pubs have played an important role in the social fabric of Britain and indeed Reading. And we all know about the three Bs in beer being one of those, very strong. Unfortunately, according to new research, only a couple of weeks ago, in the last 10 years alone, there've been, pubs are down by over 7,000 in England and Wales, terms of closure, and the Bugle is one of those. That is very sad, and the Bugle may never reopen as a pub, but I feel like because of the historical elements that Karen, sorry, councillor Rowland has said and Evelyn has said, I feel like we need to maintain the heritage aspect of pubs, especially in the historical context of Reading and their importance to the history and the social fabric of Reading, and I absolutely support it being locally listed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Evelyn and David for your presentation. For me, this is a point of principle. It meets the criteria anyway, but this is about working class heritage. And in the rebuttal, it says that a lot of the evidence given is anecdotal. Well, working class heritage tends to be anecdotal because they didn't write it down. It was only reported when people chose to report it. On page 68, the courts provided cheap housing for working people, tradesmen, in 1841. There were two shoemakers, two ladies of independent means, whatever that means, a cornporter and a boot glazer. I mean, working classes have always been boot glazers to the, anyway, not going to get into that one. So yeah, it's a matter of principle with me, and it's a civic duty to protect our heritage and pass it on to future generations. And that's not just the pretty stuff, it's the working class heritage. Thank you. I also, sorry, I will take on board that you are looking at protecting the frontage. I agree on that, that's good. But if we could incorporate the back, you know, I'm not, you know, we have to work around these things obviously as developers. I'm not, you know, I'm open to that as well. Anyway, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Not seeing, oh, sorry, councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. I support the, the recommendation to add this. The Bugle, for me, is part of my history as well. When I first moved to Reading, it was my very first local pub within Reading. So, you know, I was in there literally every night for a couple of years. So it means an awful lot to me. I love the place. I was really sad when it shut down as a pub. As was mentioned, we are sadly losing an awful lot of traditional type pubs in Reading. So, you know, for me, it's important that we do protect the heritage. It'd be great to bring it back as a pub one time, you know, in the future, but happy to support the action.
Okay, not seeing anybody else now. So can I see all those in favour of the recommendation to locally list the Bugle? Thank you, that is unanimous. Thank you. We now go on to the planning applications to be determined this evening. As was announced at the beginning, item 10 is being deferred at the officer's request. So we go straight on to item 11, which is for Downsborough Square, which if people will remember, was deferred from last month to enable a site visit. And councillor Terry is here this evening, but I'll get an officer introduction before I ask her to speak, because councillor Terry wasn't able to be here last time and she called this in to committee. So once we've had the officer introduction, I'll let councillor Terry go first. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. As you said, this application was originally presented to the 22nd of June committee and it was deferred for consideration so that a member's site visit could be undertaken. And this took place on the 14th of July. There's a brief update report for this application, which references submission of an additional neighbour objection, commenting largely on planning parking matters and also involves further comments from the council's transport officer on this matter. The update report also includes additional drawings submitted by the applicant's agent, which are intended to provide further clarity over the impact on neighbouring amenity and also the design of the parking layout. The officer recommendation remains to approve, subject to conditions as set out in the 22nd of June Main Agenda Report and Update Report, subject to completion of a legal agreement as set out in the previous report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Terry, over to you.
Thank you councillor Love Locken, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And thanks for agreeing to the site visit. I was able to attend the site visit and I found it very informative. I would like to thank the Lambourne family, who allowed you all to touch around their home at number six, and for coming back early from their holiday to allow you to do that. There are, you know, a number of concerns have been raised with local councillors about the demolition of this property, and there are various things that have been said about it. And the most recent, I think, was a letter from Reading Conservation Area Advisory Committee, I think an email that came in just the other day. So there is an issue that, of course, locally people would like to retain the bungalow, and that really, really is the best outcome that they would like. However, you have the planning application that you have in front of you, and so you have, I know that you have to speak to that. And in relation to that, again, I've been, I've had representations from a wide range of residents, a whole number of them. And in fact, there is a petition going again, I think it was reported last time, the number of signatures has grown, 66 the last time I saw. So just to emphasise a strength of feeling in the area that the concerns about this development. But for my part, I would particularly like committee to consider that, having been on the site visit, I'm not a very good spatial person, which I'll never go on planning committee because I don't think I'll ever get it. But actually, in the real world, when you stand it there and look at it and you look at the, the feel of it and whether it's going to sit, it really does feel like an overdevelopment. It feels overbearing. Real concerns about the light issues for number six, where they have two-bedroom windows. These are not landing windows, these are not attic rooms, these are rooms that are in use by the, the family, and I think they will be affected by it, and I think that needs to be considered. So overall, it's really just an opportunity to say that. I do have reservations about the parking. I think tandem parking is interesting and often, you know, it is seen in properties, people make, you know, take their gardens out and stick two cars in, and clearly one has to get out before the other one can get out. Don't often see it myself in a new development, and I think that people will choose to park on the road. And I think it is an area that is parked out at the moment, and I think that is a concern. The side-by-side parking for me is also an issue. I've seen it elsewhere, and I think that it looks very tight, and if the shrubbery grows, will they really use those two parking spaces? So notwithstanding the additional comments that you've had, I would still challenge whether all those parking spaces would actually be used. And in fact, I think people will be parking, are trying to park out on the road, and that will just cause more problems for local residents. So I think I represent the general views in a very short space of time. I think it is, you know, not the right development, and it will not work in that area, and I'd like the committee to consider those points in your deliberations next. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I've got various people starting to indicate. councillor Gavin.
Thank you, Chair. I did go on the site visit, and firstly, I'd like to say that I think that this piece of land, where the bungalow, lovely old 30s, I think it is, or 20s Arts and Crafts Bungalow, but I don't think it will be retained. I think this is a piece of land that will be developed. But having been on the site visit, having read the papers initially, I thought that there wasn't really a particular reason to refuse it, a planning reason, material reason to refuse it. But having gone on the site visit, I've changed my mind. I think that this is not the right development for this conservation area. I think that the, particularly the detached house on the, on the left-hand side of the plot, which is three stories, will be quite close to the boundary. Well, in fact, on the update pack, we can see on page 20 of the update pack, that on the overlay plan, it is exactly the same, on the same building line of the side of the house as the current single story. So if we look at the photograph at the top there, the top left of the screen, imagine that the white property is, is the one we went and looked in those windows, and instead of that building being there, there will be a three-story, almost blank brick wall, which rises above the, the ground. And I think that it is too squashed on that side. It looks, it felt like overdevelopment to me. I think it's a, it's a shallow site, it's a very wide site, but very shallow. And the stepping back of the buildings, I think in order to create some space at the front for parking, which was required, the stepping back of the proposal means that the back gardens are minute and/or will be minute, which again means that there will be a three-story building which is rising up where that bungalow currently exists and overlooking the neighbours at the back, crowding into that space. So, as I say, I do not, I, I'm not fighting the, the, the principle that this, there will be a development on this piece of land, but I don't think that these developments, this develop, this particular development is the right one for this site, and I, and I, I will vote against it, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Lang, I think you were indicating next.
Yeah. You're councillor Lang, I think.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I think councillor Gavin and councillor Terry have picked up on most of the points I was going to, I was going to say. But to me, I think it's, the developers tried really hard. It's like, I said it in the pre-meet, it's like a restaurant that's got an over-expansive menu, and then they end up doing a lot of the things poorly. That's what it feels like to me. I mean, they've sort of like, the house on the left is an exact copy of the house on the left, and the building on the right, the two dwellings on the right are an exact copy of the one on the right. I mean, they could have, if they'd have turned around and faced the other way, they could, they could have seen there was a Swiss-type chalet next to, I think, an Edwardian-type home. So they didn't have to, they didn't have to match it as well as they did. Councillor Gavin's point about going in line with the single story, I think that's very relevant because it pushes it right up to the, the building line. It says on the report, there's 20, 20 metres at the back, but obviously that's from the building to the existing buildings at the back, so the back gardens are quite cramped. Well, yeah, and, and the thing that, when I was, number six were kind enough to let us have a view from their bedrooms. And a particular thing that I did note on that day was the first floor had two windows, and it was stated that because of the second window, it wasn't a primary window, therefore light loss wasn't an issue. Yet when the architect called it an attic room, which councillor Terry mentioned earlier, there's only one window, it's a primary, primary window. So I think- So I think loss of privacy and light loss is, is relevant to that. I mean, sorry for repeating myself, I think I mentioned they could have Dutch hip that gable, that would have given 45 degrees or whatever pitch they were going to do it at, allowing more light. So yeah, that's about it for me. And also on the drawings, even though they state that as an attic room, those homes were built with three floors. It wasn't done afterwards, it was built like it. Therefore, it's a master bedroom on, on a second floor. As when these are built, yeah, there will be a ground floor, a first floor and a second floor, not an attic room, a second floor. So that's the points that I would like. There's, there's issues with the turning circles of the, of the cars which, which are issues. But no, I, I accept that the chalet type building won't stay. I accept that it will be developed, but I think it could be done better. That's it, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Rowland, were you indicating?
I have not yet, but I could.
You thought you were, sorry. I must have seen you wave your hand. So do you want councillor, I want to be supposed to go first then?
Chair, I can go ahead and speak if you want.
Okay, come on then.
I do, I do happen to take on board what my colleagues who were able to attend the site visit were able to see. I think that it was a very, very good call to take a site visit. I, I trust my colleagues and their observation. And upon speaking with, with colleagues that had come back from the visit, the word overbearing, overbearing kept coming out and that, and that kind of description. I do take on board also that this is in a conservation area and that the Conservation Area Advisory Committee in fact feels that something could be done with the bungalow site. When one looks at a conservation area and one takes everything into, into study along a street front, the bungalow provides what we call a gentle variation that contributes to the character and, and the appreciation of the conservation area. And frankly, I would probably be inclined to concur with the CAC that I do believe that that bungalow actually has value in that, in that respect. I had concerns that were expressed in the last, in the last meeting that we had before we deferred this for a site visit, that the, that the designs, as also mentioned, were almost pastiche and, and not to a good, not to a good level. The, when one does develop a site, one doesn't want something that's going to stand out and detract from a conservation area because that's part of our policy, that we do not want it to detract. But I think that it, the proposal is, is far too large for the site. I, I think that it is, is not answered the, the situation with that site in the correct manner, simply by, by applying pastiche kind of tech, you know, elements to, to the buildings. So I would agree that we should, on reflection, and which I was 50/50 last time myself, look to refuse this. I would propose to you Chair that we look along the lines of CC7, which is in regards to the, the design and public realm. We talk about the situation, about the layout, the urban structure and the urban grain, which I think could be something the scale, the height and massing along with that. And the, at least, at least others could possibly say other things on that. I would also say with CC8 too, a safeguarding amenity, which involves privacy and overlooking that councillor Lang had mentioned, and also access to sunlight and daylight, which from what I'm hearing and what I'm understanding, I think are, have probably gone too far. And also the visual dominance and overbearing effects of the development. So I would go there. And then finally, I would also go to EN3 and I apologise here because I'm flipping through the local plan. And that is our protection of conservation areas, which I would, I would suggest in line with EN3 that we would be talking about, once again, the sympathetic landscaping and planting the front gardens and the overall obligation to, to the development, to conserve and enhance the conservation areas, which I do not believe that does. So I will also be voting against it and I've given you some substantial reasons that I feel that we could refuse this on. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, councillor Hornby Smith.
Thank you Chair. Well, I agree with the other councillors that have spoken actually in many ways. I think the key point is that development on this site will happen. It's bound to happen, it's, it's a natural development. I don't feel so strongly about the bungalow, but I entirely agree with what councillor has said about the two-bedroom windows at number six being, being completely overlooked. And there's a lot of privacy there and that is in conflict with CC8, policy CC8. I think it's good that there's been some close working between officers and the developers. And the conclusion that they reach in the report is that this, this matches the prevailing pattern of development within the conservation area. However, when I go up to Downshire Square, and I did go up to Downshire Square and I did look, look at the, the building, I didn't go on the site visit, but I did look at the building and the context, there is no prevailing pattern of development there. And I think the problem with this proposal is that it's, it's an attempt to, I think councillor Lang put it, it's an attempt to try and match up two properties that are adjacent to it. And it's too close and to those. And the rea, the reason that doesn't work is, is in part because of the overlooking, which I've mentioned, but it's also the parking, which I think is, is a bit of a problem actually. I can't see, if you have a choice of parking on the road or trying to, trying to fit your car next to someone in order to keep the frontage the same as the properties next to it, it's a very, very narrow form of parking and I don't think in practice it'll work. So I think it's also in conflict with TR5 in that the parking is inadequate with this design. Now that's, that's because the designer is trying too hard to match the properties next to it in terms of the frontage. I think we need to look at something that's a little bit perhaps looser than that, less, less intensively developed. I think in the report somewhere it mentions that the, the development is maxed out. So it's acceptable just, is, is pretty much the assessment of the officers, I think. I would, I would think on the, on the principle that we should be cautious about this and on the very obvious principle that it does overlook those two, two-bedroom windows in number six, this is not acceptable. So I will also be voting against it. I would also like the grounds of TR5 to be incorporated, but particularly CC8. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, councillor Carnell indicating.
Thank you Chair. It sounds like there is a, a degree of unanimity on this application. I went on the site visit, thank you to the, the neighbours for allowing us to wander around their house. You don't really get a feel from the drawings about the, the scale of the development until you're actually standing in the plot. If I were to read Planning History paragraph two at the bottom of page 111, I'm sure a lot of people wouldn't be sure if I'm talking to a previous application or this one. I'll, I'll not inflict that on you. But also the question of amenity, not just for the neighbours at number six, but the properties that back on, these are having windows on the second floor overlooking the back gardens of the properties behind, which is not there now, it's a lot higher, a lot closer than the existing upper store windows. And one other comment I will make in paragraph 6.30, it refers to the first floor window as a secondary window. The gentleman that resides in that room has got mobility issues. That's not his secondary window, that's his window to the world. He watches the world go past through that window, his, his view would be very much restricted. And I will not be supporting the application tonight. Thank you Chairman.
Not seeing, oh, sorry councillor Moore, you did indicate, yeah.
Thank you Chair. Reading desperately needs more housing and especially needs more affordable housing. But having been on the site visit, this ain't it. I think, I agree with other councillors that I think development of some description is inevitable on this site. I think having visited the site, the bungalow will need some work or it needs something there. I don't think it's, you know, it is variation as, as people have said before, but I think that what has been proposed is, is just too much. It's too close to other properties and I think that in trying to make it look like the other side of the properties, they've, I think, I think it was councillor Owen said, it's almost like a pastiche, it's, it just, it just doesn't work. And I'll also be voting against this application, thank you.
Thank you, I'm not seeing anybody else now. Unlike councillor Hornby Smith, I couldn't go on the site visit, but I did go and have a, actually, you know, parked up in, there was a, one parking space for me to park in and looked with the report. And it did seem to me to be very cramped even just from the road. And I'm sorry I couldn't get to the, the inside bit, but it's, other councillors have spoken very at length about their concerns. So could I ask officers if they have any response they'd like to make to any of that?
Thank you Chair. We've got some thoughts on what perhaps framing the reasons for refusal. I think possibly we'd like to suggest that we pass delegated authority to frame the word reasons for refusal and in consultation with yourself, vice-chair and all councillors in terms of the final wording of the reasons for refusal, if that's the decision of the, the committee. I think in terms of the, I think the reasons for refusal, you're suggesting in terms of the, it's the, the scale and sighting and proximity to the, the windows and the flank elevation in number six. You've got concerns over, overbearing, visual dominance, overlooking, loss of daylight and the consequent harm to the immunity of those neighbours. I think we also have concerns about overlooking to the, to the rear, to the proximity of the, the rear of those buildings in terms of the harm to the immunity of, of buildings to the, to the rear. You've got concerns about the, the excessive scale, site coverage, resulting in some cramped overdevelopment of the, the plot and, yeah, harm to the, the conservation area. In terms of the parking, possibly officers might suggest that the issues are perhaps less technical and more to do with the design, the layout and the, and overdevelopment of the plot altogether and whether that's, that's something which would be woven into that, that reason. And I think it'd be important to remember in, in any reasons for refusal, the 106 agreement, because that would need to form a reason for refusal. If, if the 106 agreement wasn't completed to do with securing the affordable housing, there would need to be another, another reason for refusal.
Okay. That is all the sense we, councillor Hornby Smith?
Chair, I'm happy as long as the parking issues are taken on board through another policy objection and it's to do with the overdevelopment. I'm happy to, to drop the TR5 if, if, if you're uneasy about that.
Well, we'll, we'll see what comes forward as part of the, the minute on this, but I hope that we've probably got unanimity, but we'll take a vote to find out. So all those in favour of rejecting this application for the reasons outlined by a number of councillors? Thank you, that is unanimous.
Chair, just to, just to check, I think we, we were being advised from our legal advisor, we got to, first of all, you got to make the move to not agree, sorry, to not agree the original recommendation.
We are not agreeing to the recommendation by moving a different recommendation.
Are you happy enough Angela?
Okay.
All right.
But if we are able to. Apologies, thank you Chair. If we're able as councillors to offer the reasons for refusal, which I appreciate the officers will support, the specific, if we're able to give policy reasons, I appreciate there were some already mentioned. And then you summarised those Steve? Okay, but just my main point is as long as the council are led, which I believe there was a, a good discussion about that.
Yeah, well, I'm, you know, I heard a number of policies, both in principle and the specific number of the policy mentioned by various people. So I'm satisfied that councillors have put forward the reasons for moving to a recommendation that rejects this application. Councillor, yeah, were you indicating?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, I mean, some of us didn't speak because we agreed with people that had already spoken. But I mean, just on the parking, for instance, it's going from a maximum of, say, two or three spaces to six, which you're suddenly going to try and squash six cars in to this plot. I mean, we, we didn't, some of us didn't speak because we already agreed with others. So we could have spoken, we could have carried on at length, I think.
So I, I'm certainly satisfied that councillors articulated the reasons.
And Chair, just to clarify, I mean, asking for delegated authority to clarify the precise wording based on the councillors' discussion and the reasons you've, you've given and that we'll circulate those to yourself as Chair, Vice-Chair and all councillors for agreement before we issue the decision.
Right, all those in favour of, for all the reasons given, rejecting this application? That is unanimous, thank you. Takes us on to nine Coley Avenue on page 135. Again, Ethel's not here, so.
Thank you Chair. Just a brief introduction, this is the Berkshire Records Office on Coley Avenue, public building operated by West Berkshire Council. The application is for an extension to the Berkshire Records Office to provide additional archive storage. The proposals have been amended on the advice of officers during the course of the application and are now recommended for approval as set out in the main agenda. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, anybody got questions or comments? Councillor Hornby Smith?
Yeah, I just had a comment. I don't want to oppose this application. It's, it's necessary, it's great that people can access these resources and I don't have a problem with it. However, on page 145 of the report, section 727, I'm concerned that there's no real consideration of the possibilities of, of making something a little bit more sustainable than this. It seems to me that the application is basically an extension of a box. Pretty box, but it's still a box. And this, I think there are opportunities offered through CC3, policy 3 CC3, for energy efficiency measures. So I'm surprised, given that this is a, a building that is, is not in many ways dissimilar to the considerations we had a couple of meetings ago about the school, where we were saying, well, what is the school doing in terms of its materials to improve the energy efficiency of the building? And, and there doesn't seem to be any consideration of this in, in the report. And I'd have thought that under condition three, this could be incorporated by, by, where it says materials and samples to be approved pre commencement, that part of that could incorporate consideration of providing solar panels on the roof, for example, to improve efficiency. Because I think it's important that we as a council do what we can on these sorts of public buildings to improve our energy efficiency. And this is an opportunity lost. So I would like that to be incorporated into your interpretation of that condition. And if you've come up with another condition that's, that's equally viable, where you can build that in, I'm happy to, to accept that. But I do want this to be put to the applicant. I would, I would like the council officers to urge them to do that in, in line with our policy CC3. Thank you.
I'd respond to that.
Thank you Chair. I think in terms of the, there's two issues really. There's the, the question of the BRAM score. So the, the suggestion by the applicant that they would achieve good rather than very good. And this is, I think largely to do with the, the fatigous and extension to an existing building and an existing site layout, which makes it difficult to put all the different sort of criteria, meet all the different criteria in the BRAM scoring. So it says at the question about solar panels, we wouldn't normally, if it's a, if it's not a major development, it wouldn't normally trigger that requirement. But equally, you could certainly make a justification within the, the broad spirit of the policy to, to request that if the, if the committee was minded to. But it wouldn't be, wouldn't be sort of part of our normal recommendation to, to require that.
Thank you. I think one of my colleagues has mentioned that it could also be considered under condition seven, ecological enhancements to be approved.
Thanks for your answer Chair. I think in terms of the ecological, I think it'd be more on the side of decentralised energy. So policy CC4 tends to address decentralised energy such as solar panels and tends to refer to the major schemes in general. Again, if the committee was minded to impose an additional condition, then that's wicked.
Oh, I think we are minded to push this, but I hear what you say about, but given it's a publicly funded building and it's a partner authority that's fronting it, there should be surely some, and they've presumably adopted similar resolutions to Reading in terms of their approach to climate change and so on, it would be, it would be good to get them on board with this. So I certainly think we should be pushing it. So is the way of wording that in the in the conditions?
Thank you Chair, I would suggest we could amend condition eight to say to include a scheme of photovoltaic panels on the roof to supply decentralised energy to the building.
Yep. Sorry, councillor Rowland.
Sorry Chair, yes, it's a little bit hard for me to hear Mr Bygar from over here, I don't, probably because I'm hard of hearing, but, but, okay, so we're talking about solar panels, but also would the possibility exist about like a green roof? Or or is that where we're jumping to? Because, I mean, we also have to take on board that we are in the middle of a conservation area too. So there would be considerations for that. So I don't know exactly how one would, can one have the breadth of possibility existing there?
Thank you Chair. I think the, there could be a conflict between the panels on the roofs. They tend not to put solar panels on a green roof, so there might be some, so there might should be some sharing also. I think the other thing to bear in mind is that the structure or the proposal doesn't include a green roof, therefore it might not have taken that into account in the structure of the building. So that's another thing, just a caution really. But certainly if the committee felt very strongly that that should be a requirement, then condition seven would be the place probably to include that. Whereas it talks about ecological enhancements to be approved and you could quite easily, I suppose, refer to include a green roof. But that's, I think, it's not, it's not part of the proposal and there's a sort of, you could soften it by saying, including the words, a feasibility study to be submitted to see if it is feasible, because I think this is a.
What I think what's been said is we need to find ways to improve this side of this building and whatever the solution is. Giving as broader opportunities as possible rather than narrowing it down to just one thing really.
Well, thanks, thank you Chair. I think certainly condition seven would include required for ecological enhancements. But I think we would need to be, if there's specific elements of that, I think that we would need to be quite specific in terms of, if we were looking for a green roof, then that wouldn't be a fall on conclusion if we don't specify it in the condition. So I think we would probably want to include that within the list of matters to be considered and explored. So we can include that in the condition, but I think we want to also include some ability to, if it's proven to be not possible, then we want to be able to have that sort of safety. Safety.
Yeah. People are nodding, so, okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else wanting to speak on this? No, not seeing any hands. So with the adjustments to the conditions that have been talked about, are we happy to approve this application? I see all those in favour. Thank you. Takes us on to 30 Lowfield Road in Emma Green on page 149. And I think it's, Connie Davis is going to introduce this, please. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. This is a council-owned application to retain 28 temporary accommodation units for homeless individuals at Lowfield Road in Cavasham for a further 10 years. This development was granted temporary planning permission for a five-year period in 2016 and this has now expired. No new harm has been identified in retaining the dwellings for a further period of time and will help the council to continue providing accommodation for those in need. The recommendation is therefore to grant temporary planning permission subject to conditions that are in line with those on the original application but are updated when necessary. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ernest.
Yeah, thank you. Certainly we agree with the recommendations and that we can actually agree to extend for 10 years. I mean, as leave council for housing at some time when they went in, we went up there, they were concerned. But I think this whole project has been like a pathfinder for housing, like they've done with many other projects in the town. This was one of the first and we got, Reading got a lot of coverage and questions from other councillors on how it's gone and how it's progressed. So I think, you know, being able to triage families for homelessness and then to move on to permanent accommodation has been the right way. On a planning perspective, when I went up there and had a look, there are, of course, there are issues, but it's more everyday issues of litter and when people live and where people live. And I'd like to think the local councillors who were very supportive of the time, because there were issues from some of the local residents about them going in, but I thought the councillors locally in the north of of Reading were very supportive of it and I'd like to, you know, hopefully they would be supportive as well. Because they've been kept well, they've helped a lot of families who were homeless and they've been a very successful project as far as I'm concerned. So I would very much hope that we support this and vote for it and see 10 years. It's not permanent and it's almost like a triage, they go in, families go in and then they're found for permanent accommodation elsewhere in the town. So very much support. Thank you.
Thank you. Not, oh councillor Robinson?
Thank you Chair. I remember when this development was first proposed, we did have concerns. I mean, I live not far away and obviously am a ward councillor. However, I will say that it has proved a huge success. So yet more than happy, you know, we haven't had the complaints and such like that we did back, you know, in the earlier experiment in terms of what happened on that particular site. So yet more than happy to agree and, you know, agree the recommended action for the 10 years extension. Okay.
Thank you. Not seeing anybody else. So can I see all those in favour of this application? That's unanimous as well. Thank you. Takes us on to the London Street application on page 167. And again, because Eth is not here, Steve is going to introduce this. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. This application seeks full planning permission and associated listed building consent for the proposed demolition of buildings to the rear of 7577 London Street, known as Olympia Hall and the erection of 12 flats with associated parking, landscaping and a courtyard garden, together with the conversion of the ground floor of the listed building to the front to form three flats. So the total of 15 dwellings. There's an update for this report, for this application, which includes further information on the deferred payment mechanism for affordable housing. Since the publication of the main agenda report, the application has submitted, also submitted details of alternative venues which they consider to provide a similar function to the application property, which they seek to provide in aid of to justify the loss of the hall, the use. And these details are also in the updated report. Officers consider that the loss of the hall has been justified and the principle of residential use is acceptable in principle. The scheme is considered to be acceptable in terms of its design and impact on the character appearance of the listed building and the conservation area. The proposals are considered to provide a good standard of accommodation for future occupiers and importantly provide significant visual and environmental improvements to the site in terms of provision of soft landscaping, tree planting and other biodiversity enhancements. The proposals are also considered acceptable in terms of transport and parking arrangements and also sustainability matters. It is recognised that the affordable housing contribution would not be policy compliant. However, it is considered that the specific and significant heritage benefits, combined with the environmental and visual enhancements as detailed in the main report, outweigh the harm identified in respect of housing need. Both applications are recommended for approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the main agenda report and the completion of the legal agreement as set out within the main agenda report and as I mentioned in the update report. And I should add, there's an omission on the affordable housing contribution, the 119,000 contribution, that should clarify that that is payable on first occupation of the development. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Rowland and then councillor Williams.
Thank you Chair. I think this is something that I could certainly support, I think officers for their work on this. I also thank officers for the supplemental to justify by explanation an actual listing of other sites, because we do have a loss of a entertainment venue, a gathering venue. And I appreciate officers going to that extra trouble to procure that so that we can have some confidence despite the loss of the the events area, that we've got sufficient areas within the town. I do know that we are always, I take on board as the former lead for culture, that we are always short of sites for large venues and all that. But I do think that officers have set out sufficiently that the the improvements that we will see through this and the respect to a grade two and grade two star listed building outweigh the loss of the venue in that regard. So I really do appreciate that. I also note that Historic England gives quite a great deal of confidence to the proposed design and lists specifically that in line with paragraph 2006, the NPPF, that this design will actually be able to enhance or better reveal the significance of the building. And that is really, really important. I would like to thank the architect and developer for their work on that. Because I think as we've seen throughout this evening, you know, this is a town that does respect its heritage and this is a, this is an important heritage site there on London Street. And I think that, I think that a really good job has been done here and I'm really happy to support that. And I do hope my colleagues will as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Williams.
Thank you Chair. I agree with councillor Rowland, there's a lot that is acceptable here, there's a lot that's good. The affordable housing mechanism is giving me a lot of concern though. No longer are we getting the 50%, which, I know councillor Page, remember, we used to get in Reading. And it's no, it's not even the 30% which would be policy compliant. In the report, it says we're getting 4% affordable housing and a payment mechanism that I can't quite understand from the text in the update. So I guess one of my questions would be, can an officer just talk us through that deferred payment mechanism in plain English, I guess, how it will work, what an open book basis cap etcetera is and whether there's a realistic chance of us ever receiving any money. I worry that instead of zero carbon, we get an offset contribution and instead of affordable homes, we get a payment mechanism, maybe, at some future time. So it doesn't seem like it's the developer who might be paying it. It seems as though future residents are paying here. There's a lot to recommend with this application, but the affordable housing at 4% is a real concern Chair.
Councillor Page, were you indicating, do you want to comment first and then?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I wouldn't claim to be an expert in the same way that our valuers are experts, but I shall do my best. The, certainly in terms of the guaranteed amount would be the 119,000 pound contribution and that would be payable, as I mentioned earlier, on first occupation of the development. The, and as I said, that only equates to 4% affordable housing. The remaining 26% in effect would be subject to this deferred payments mechanism and that isn't guaranteed because it is based on profit levels achieved by the development itself. The basic requirement would be that at substantial completion of the development, the developer would need to submit a new viability assessment in the same way that they have submitted one currently, as a comparison exercise. And if that viability assessment, that review demonstrates that the gross development value at that time, if the profits on that gross development value exceed 17%, so in effect if they've made profits of more than 17%, then for every pound above the 17% value, we would take a pound for pound share of that up to the cap of 714,490, which would be the equivalent of the 26%. So it would be, yes, it's a late stage review, it's done at, once the development's built, the values would be more definite at that point and be able to be seen more clearly. If the profits are in excess of 17% in effect, then we would start to take a share and it would be based on the profit. So, so no, it is not certain and it's not guaranteed. So the only guaranteed amount is the 119,000. So I think the amount of weight that you'd apportion to the deferred payment, I would suggest to be perhaps far less than what is in the bag in effect under the 119,000. Thank you Chair.
Anybody else? Did you want to come in councillor Page and then councillor Moore?
I was just going to say, Chair, through you to councillor Williams, please don't inherit the mantle of councillor Devine, who no matter what was told to him, no matter how many hours officers sat down and explained to him in basic Janet and John style, he never understood. Now, I know that councillor Williams is capable of understanding and I know he's being mischievous in saying that we achieved 50% affordable housing back in the early 2000s. We never did. And a briefing note has been sent to his group leader, which sets out by Mark Waringham in great detail the reason we lowered that percentage as part of the review of the local plan and the introduction of the community infrastructure levy. And I would just say to councillor Williams, he knows that affordable housing is one element of a whole range of factors that we as a local authority have to take into account in approving planning applications. And obviously we give it a very high priority. But in the context of listed buildings, of sites such as this with a huge range of sensitivities and difficulties to overcome, this isn't a conventional green field where you're just building new houses and where one might hope and realistically expect a policy compliant affordable housing offer. And the report goes into great lengths to explain that reality, which is why a lower affordable housing figure is regrettably necessary. Otherwise, we would be essentially scuppering the redevelopment of this important site. There are other developments that I would remind councillor Williams that we have approved recently, which are 100% affordable housing, such as in the former Abbey Ward, very close to the Drews site. It was either Northfield Road, I think, was their actual address. We also have Cavasham Road, currently being built out on the old garage site on the corner of Great Knowles Street and Great Knowles Street, 100%. of Great Knolly Street and Great Knolly Street, 100%. So please councillor Williams, don't inherit the mantle of councillor Devine and display, as I would have thought, the new chair of ordinance, governance, audit and governance should, that greater sophistication in the application of council policies. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Page. Councillor Moore, you were next.
Thank you, Chair. I take what councillor Page has said, but I somewhat agree with councillor Williams to a point where I think it is both regrettable and very disappointing that 4% is all that can be achieved here. And people have asked me if I was going to take on the mantle of former councillor Devine. I'm a very different person, even though I may look like him a little bit, but I'm sure former councillor Devine will be delighted to know that he still is rent free in councillor
Councillor Lang, follow that, yes.
Yeah, I'll follow that. It's just to take on councillor Page's point about Janet and John language. It's actually a legal requirement to use plain English and some councillors do appreciate when reports are explained to us, so that's it. And also our affordable housing policy stands up against any local authority across the UK, exemplary. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Rowland.
I'm sorry, I can't resist actually. I do just want to reiterate, and councillor Page did say this too, but affordable housing, when you are dealing with a listed building and you are dealing with valuation like this, this is why we look at valuations very strategically. And also when we have a listed building, we are reusing a building instead of felling it and that comes with a lot of excess difficulties and challenges. We're dealing with a grade two star listed building and the materials for that are very, very expensive. So I actually, obviously we want the most we can, but I actually applaud and know that a great deal of work was done by officers to get the best deal we could. And otherwise, we're going to sit down there and let a listed building that has quite a significance in this town rot. And I'm not for that.
Okay, not seeing anybody else. So can we see all those in favour of the recommendation? And all those against? Any abstentions? Right, so that's two abstentions. Thank you. Moving on to the Hamilton Centre on page 205, Richard Etoff is introducing this.
Thank you, Chair. This is not a planning application for your consideration, it's where a developer who already has a planning permission, which is subject to a section 106 legal agreement, is requesting that the agreement be varied. As this was a committee decision originally, the proposed variation needs to come back to your meeting for approval. For clarity, the playing pitch improvement sum of £25,000 has already been received. Additional time is requested for spending that contribution with contribution that the monies can also be spent on artificial turf provision. The council's leisure service is in agreement with the proposed variation as it allows suitable flexibility to allow the funds to be used in the most beneficial way. So the officer recommendation is to grant the deed of variation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments councillor Williams?
Thank you very much, Chair. I don't, it's good to hear that the £25,000 is already in the bank. I don't object to a small delay in order to do this properly. What I do object to is the artificial turf. The impact on the environment of a plastic pitch is significant. Artificial turf needs replacing regularly, it's not easy to recycle. Microplastics leach into the water sources, one of which runs directly under this playing field in the form of the culvert from White Knights down to the river. After suffering the highest temperatures on record, it's worth noting that grass helps cool the atmosphere. Artificial turf gets a great deal hotter and contributes to temperature rises. I'm also not convinced this application would have originally been approved with an artificial pitch, I doubt it. Application 191634 was controversial at the time. It took for some development parts of the Alfred Sutton playing fields and this committee was so determined to stop further erosion of that green space, it added an informative to the planning decision, bespoke informative number one, which noted that in light of the considerable level of development that's taken place around the open space, any subsequent planning application for development that would further erode the open space would not be welcomed. This use of artificial turf is difficult. As I said, I'm okay with a short delay to the planning, to the planned enhancements, but the enhancements should be made to the existing pitches as was agreed by this committee and by that application. You don't declare a climate emergency, dig up a grass field and put it back with plastic. So that's my concern. I don't have a problem with a short delay to properly do any drainage works and properly set the pitches out. The money's already in, presumably that is with our leisure department and they can use it as they wish, but to include artificial turf, I have a problem with, Chair.
Do you want to comment on that, Richard?
I'll try, Chair, some technical aspects in here. I have spoken to the leisure service on this and really they're wanting the opportunity to be able to do this if it arises. It's not clear that using artificial turf would be the preferred method going forward. I'm aware of the plastics and the rubbers you get off these pitches, having two small sons who play on 3G and 4G pitches and the pellets get all over my house, which I have to put up with. I should imagine that the drainage things under there are going to have some sort of filter or something to stop them going into the culvert, which I understand is your concern. The other thing that the leisure service did tell me was there would be a quite, if they went forward with this, it would happen to one of the pitches only and the gain in the amount of improvements on that pitch would be something like they would be able to have four times the intensity on that pitch that they would not be able to have on the green pitches. So your green pitches would be left and be less intensely used, which I suppose has got to be an overall benefit and an environmental benefit, if you will.
Thank you councillor Page.
Chair, I have some sympathy with the comments that councillor Williams has made. I wonder whether we might be able to proceed in agreeing the principle of the recommendation here about the extension in the time, but ask for, but defer the approval of the plastic, of the artificial turf pending a further report back to us on that element. Would that be doable? Because Richard Etoff did say that it was an option that they were considering and I would want, therefore, I think it's entirely legitimate, the point that councillor Williams is raising, so I wouldn't want to dismiss that, but I don't want to hold things up. So whether we can sort of proceed with an approval in principle and ask for, and then determine the detail, yay or nay to a plastic?
Through you, Chair, I don't know quite how that would work. What is in the report is, from my conversations with leisure and education, is that if you were putting in a 3G or 4G pitch, that sort of thing, there would have to be a lot of groundwork and fencing and that kind of thing and that would require planning permission anyway, so you'd be looking at these issues at that stage.
Well, yeah, but we still would have approved the principle if we agree this recommendation. This allows for the principle of an artificial turf, of artificial turf. And what I think councillor Williams is raising is a concern that I'm sure other members share as to whether that should be something that we just sign off on now or whether we ask for further details before we do sign off on that option. That's simply, I don't see that that should be a problem.
Got other people indicating now, so shall I take them all and then you can come back again? Councillor Gavin.
Yes, I absolutely take on board councillor Williams' comments and councillor Page's and it does seem bonkers for us to be laying plastic. But I wonder if we just removed the phrase including artificial turf and just to be paid towards physical improvements, knowing that they have to come, it has to come back to us anyway, we can just, we just remove that phrase and then we get another shot at it in any case.
Councillor Rowland, were you indicating? Point being made? Yeah? Yeah? Would you like to add?
I think that would work.
So, okay, we'll need some, obviously need some wording to, it's quite simple, I think, just take out the, yes.
So removing the phrase, including artificial turf provision?
I think that's what you said, wasn't it councillor Gavin? Yeah. Yep. So with that amendment to the recommendation, can I see all those in favour of this application? With that, yeah, I said, yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Go on to item 16, which is the Brunel Park report on page 209. And I think it's Connie going to introduce that? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This application relates to units four and five Brunel Retail Park, which were the former Go Outdoors and SES Furniture Shops. The applicant is intended to amalgamate the units and it will be occupied by retailer home bargains. Currently, there are planning conditions on the units in Brunel Retail Park that restrict what goods can be sold there as it is an out of centre retail park. Under this application, a more extensive range of goods are looking to be sold at the units. The additional items are food and drink, household goods, toys and games and health and beauty products, including medicines and baby products. It has been demonstrated through retail impact assessments that the widening of the permitted goods will not have an adverse impact on the local and district centres and so the recommendation is to grant permission subject to conditions. Thank you, Chair.
Any comments or questions? Councillor Lang as a ward councillor.
Yes, more to stay, but I support the recommendations. It's just to reference the previous application which came to pack in 15th July 21 and I think it was, we had representation from Adam Bowding, who was the chair of the Kenet Island Residents Committee and he raised HGV traffic alarms and importantly, which is what I'm going to reference now, waste management. The waste management on that site has been a bit problematic, so I was just, wanted to note that really for, they said they would improve their waste management and we've had to have environmental in there to sort things out, so that's it. It was a condition of the previous application for the logistics site further down, but it's relevant to the shops there, if we could note that, please.
Do we need an actual recommendation, sorry, condition around that?
Or an informative?
Or an informative?
Yeah, that they monitor and improve their waste management.
Connie, what do you think? An informative or a condition?
I'd probably say an informative. Given that this application only relates to two of the units on Brunel Retail Park, this application wouldn't be able to control the waste produced by other units that are not controlled under this application, so it would probably be best for a wider informative to be used.
Yeah, I think councillor Lang is indicating he's happy with that. Councillor Hornsby Smith, you're indicating?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to ask, I entirely support the application, I'll be voting in favour of it. Welcome that the two empty units are going to be filled, that's good news, not only for Whitley Ward but also for neighbouring Church Ward, so I welcome this. There are however, a couple of questions that I have. The first is concerns section 610 of the report on page 216. The report states the goods condition applied to this permission will relate only to the new amalgamated unit and will make it clear the widened goods range will not apply to units four and five individually should the amalgamation not take place. What I wanted to ask about that is what happens if home bargains decide to sell up? Does the revised condition apply just to home bargains or does it apply for the successor users of the sites? So I wanted to know, are we setting up something which is different for these units in perpetuity or is it just for home bargains? That's one question. The second is just a clarification really. I'm not sure about the amount of floor space that is being allowed for food sales. So by way of illustrating this, paragraph 611 says food and drink for consumption of the premises from an area of no greater than 840 square metres. Paragraph 614 talks about 843 square metres of discount food sales. However, paragraph 615 says the sale of food and drink from an area no greater than 280 square metres. So it's just a clarification, what's, there's a big difference between allowing food at 280 square metres and allowing food sales at 843 square metres. So I just wanted an answer to the question, what it is that we're allowing here. Thank you.
Connie, thank you.
Thank you. So in response to your first question, the condition, we are granting permission for these units, so the permission is not exclusively to home bargains, so these conditions would apply to any future retailer that uses the amalgamated units. In answer to your second question, apologies if there's some inconsistency in the report, these floor space to be used for food and drink is 840 square metres. This was the figure that was reviewed as part of the application with the planning policy officer and it was deemed that selling food from that amount of floor space would not have an adverse impact on surrounding retail units. Hope that helps.
Yes, thank you very much.
Right, not seeing anybody else indicating, so can I see all those in favour of this Thank you, that's unanimous. Go on to the final report, which is the out of Reading application at Henley Road, Caversham. And again, it's Connie to introduce this, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This is an adjacent authority consultation from South Oxfordshire District Council for the retrospective change reviews of a redundant gravel pit and lake for recreational sports. It is considered that the proposal's most likely impact on Reading Borough would be vehicle movements and highway related matters. An objection has been raised from the Transport Department as insufficient information has been provided to determine the highways' impact of the proposal, which is detailed in the main report. It is proposed that the council objects to the application on this basis. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Yo.
Thank you, Chair. So whilst this is obviously a popular location, and the actual site isn't in the Reading Borough council area, as officers say, the effect on local transport in our area, it hasn't had a chance to be assessed and as neighbouring ward councillors, we agree that this, we need to make this representation to South Oxfordshire.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Oh, councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I agree that a message should be sent to SODC in objection. We cannot, you know, understand the full impact of what this is going to do on traffic until we actually see a really heavy, you know, use of the facilities. By all accounts, I haven't been there myself, only driven past it, but certainly given the weather that we've had recently, I can certainly see it's building in the weather that we've had recently, I can certainly see its building in terms of the amount of customers they're getting, so, you know, certainly happy for the recommended action in terms of what is proposed.
Thank you. So again, not seeing anybody indicating, so can we agree with the recommendation in this report? All those in favour? Thank you, that's unanimous as well. Thank you very much, everybody.